I'll record one moment, please.
And we're ready.
All right. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City Council's special meeting for September 1st, 2021. It is 6:01. Of course, we're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street. We have a little bit of business to take care of before we do the roll call, and that's going to be swearing in Kathy Klink as a member of City Council. Come on down, and we're going to make this official.
There was a parade, and your honors went by.
Yeah, no bawfers.
Was it your new car, Josh?
Yeah.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
To do this again?
Sure.
Okay. Put your right hand. Be after me. I Kathleen Klink.
I Kathleen Klink.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I obey.
That I will obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respect.
And I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Of the City of Hamilton, Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of councilmember, City of Hamilton.
Of councilmember, City of Hamilton.
Thank you so very much for.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I'm right over here. That's okay. Great.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we do a roll call? Then we're going to do a pledge and a moment of silence, quick prayer, sir. Roll call, please, sir.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Klink.
Here.
Moller.
Present.
Let's do a pledge of allegiance and a quick, you want a silence prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Give a moment of silence and then a really quick prayer, but a moment of silence for the 13 members of military who passed away protecting others doing their duty in Afghanistan. God, please help us, guide us tonight as we do our jobs. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
You're leading us in the Yusef ARPA funds discussion.
Mayor, what we, what City staff has done is we have coordinated staff to align with the suggestions or the ideas that City Council wanted additional information on.
Okay.
So the clerk has the list of items, and what we're going to do is put the item on the screen, and then the appropriate staff person will come to the podium, and they will give a short presentation, and then answer any questions that the City Council may have.
Great. Thank you.
So for our first item tonight regarding streets and infrastructure, first topic being North Hamilton Crossing, tunnel evaluations and escalated timeline, I have our Director of Engineering, Rich Angle, and our Assistant Director of Engineering, Alan Messer, present tonight to evaluate those topics.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're going to put the general target study area for the North Hamilton Crossing on the screen and offer you the opportunity to ask any questions you might have about our, the study that's ongoing at the moment. I would hope many of you received the email blast that we are now opening it up for public involvement and comment. And I know we've been very pleased. We had 450 people already look at the website and start offering comments and responding to the questions that are on the website, so we're pretty pleased with that. It's going to be open until the end of September. And we're also talking about scheduling a public involvement meeting in late October. Alan, you want to give any comments about that?
Yeah, hopefully everybody's already seen the email blast and been able to get on to the website. We set up a website specifically for it, northhamiltoncrossing.org. Like Rich said, we had 450 respondents, pretty much primarily in support of the project, some, you know, ideas, some reiteration of what the needs we expected that to hear about were. We're very early in the planning process. Like he said, we're targeting November 5th or November 9th for a stakeholder meeting, which you all receive invites to that once we confirm the location and the time. I could answer any questions you have, but right now we've looked at various routings, but this, the process is we do the public input, and then we start laying out the routes. And if there's questions you have, specifics, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I think the information I was, I saw from Council was they were interested if there was a way that we could accelerate the timeline, number one, and number two, is there a way that we could evaluate a bridge versus maybe more of a tunnel opportunity, things of that nature? Maybe if you can start with those two questions.
Yes, so as far as the first item, I mean, we're going through the federal process right now. That adds perhaps about a year to that, you know, to the overall timeframe. But really what our constraints are as far as getting this done is funding. We could be ready to build this thing, say, at the end of 2023 if we had the, you know, the millions of dollars necessary for construction. So realistically, lining up, you know, additional federal and state grants, we're thinking we're about five years out before we start construction, you know, perhaps closer to four. There's not really an acceleration of time as, you know, a bridge versus a tunnel versus the underpass versus a bridge over the railroad. It tends to be more impact on people and cost. We, I discussed the potential tunnel option with the consultant today. It really doesn't look like a work in this instance because it's such a steep drop down to the river. So you'd think there's about a 20-foot drop from, say, you know, 127 and B Street down to the river bottom. And then by the time you get under that, your, the tunnel would be so steep that it would be difficult to get down and back up in time. So we'd actually be coming up well beyond B Street and well beyond 127 on the other side. So that one's probably not a consideration. We're probably looking at a bridge over the river. An underpass is still a possibility for the railroad crossing. Those tend to be more expensive than bridges, but often a smaller impact. And we're just not far enough along yet to say what that would be or where it would be.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So do we believe that North Hamilton is where this should be? We're pretty much, all the studies and everything feel that for the best flow of traffic, an additional bridge would be best at North Hamilton.
Yes, referring to like the presentation Rich gave at the last meeting on east-west alternatives, I'm just looking solely at the, the impact that, that each of those alternatives has on travel time reduction. North Hamilton Crossing was by far the, the best bang for the buck. Some of them were, I mean, almost negligible improvements.
And the estimated dollar figure, when you say if we had the money, we could start in 2023 potentially?
So the, the total dollar figure, and right now, because we haven't selected that route, so from point A being Northwest Washington at B Street, West Elkton, to point B being 129 at Hampshire, anywhere from 75 to 175. Now, most likely, the ones that are in excess of 100 million, we're going to strike those from the, the list of alternatives. Reason that, there's such a wide range for cost. Ideally, I think we'd like to, you know, extend Northwest Washington over the river and come through the, you know, through the farm fields and down that way, almost on the outer loop there in the study area. But that adds about 50 million to the cost. So most likely, unless, you know, this group and stakeholders think otherwise, we're probably going to strike that as an option and then focus further south. So then you're talking in that 75 to, you know, 100, 125 million dollar range. But again, that's for the full project. That's a four-lane road, basically, 129 over across the river. When you start zeroing in further, you know, a river crossing, a railroad crossing, then you're getting down in that $50 million, 50 to 60 to 75 million dollar range that's, you know, if we get a significant federal grant for it, it's, it's getting closer to manageable, you know, hopefully with some partnership from the county and, and others here locally in the state.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Alan, Rich, in your determination, if we, as, as Councilwoman Vaughn asked, if the monies were there and if we were able to start at the end of 2023, what's timeframe? Is it a couple of years, under the, under the plan that we see there? Is it still a couple of years if we were to move it a little bit further south? What's the estimated ribbon cutting day?
It's probably two to three years. I mean, it, you know, you can get anything accelerated. You end up paying more to the contractor, but I mean, a reasonable, be similar to, to South Hamilton Crossing. I think that one was, we gave them 30 months, but realistically, they could have knocked it out in 24.
I recall that. That's why I asked, fellows, and thanks for, thanks for the input. Federal funding, you said probably a year, due applications and grant monies and things?
So it's kind of all over the place. Right now, we've got grant applications out there to the federal government just for the design phase. We've got one for congressional spending for a million dollars that we're hopeful on. We've got one for a federal program called RACE that for 950,000 that, you know, that's a total unknown. We submitted a build application for the same project a year earlier, and the application itself received highly recommended, but then it got to the point that they're basically picking based on politics and, you know, we weren't in a swing state. We didn't get, you know, we didn't make the cut. We did receive, or we preliminarily received track funding for $2 million towards design. That we expect to become final September 22nd when track meets again. So they've prepared a draft list, and we're on that list for $2 million. Once you kind of get your foot in the door with these organizations, these, for planning, they tend to be more favorable towards you, to give you money for construction. If you remember back, we got, was it Rich? 10 million from?
10 million.
From, from track for South Hamilton Crossing. And we demonstrated, you know, that was a successful project with us and the TID. So, you know, we've, we've got the track record there that improves our chances for this one.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Back when South Hamilton Crossing was being done, there was the phrase shovel-ready. Is that still, and, and I think that between City Hamilton's track record and the TID, we ended up getting money that was out there because other ones did not, other communities didn't have it. Is that still something that's being considered, this shovel-ready expression?
I haven't heard that batted around as much this time because it's, it's, from what I understand, meant to be a more sustainable infrastructure bill. That is not, you know, just this big plug of money, one-time deal that is spread over a number of years, which should put us in a good position. And we're close, we're probably a year out-ish from having our, like, environmental clearances. That's a big hurdle. But, but once we have that track money, that helps us build momentum too, because we've already received money from an organization that, you know, that's, that's kind of like an endorsement of the merit of the project.
If I, if I might add, our focus right now is to get through the preliminary engineering, get our preferred route determined, start the detailed engineering and preparation of construction drawings, and get the right-of-way secured so that we are ready to go and can prove that to any grant funding agencies that we submit our applications to. So it is, like you said, Carla, shovel-ready, but we need to get to that point, and we're focusing on that right now.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one follow-up question? I mean, you're throwing out some really early timelines. I mean, to assemble the type of funding we're needing, I mean, we're looking at legitimately maybe seven to 10 years away. I mean, for us to come up with 75 to 100 million dollars, it's going to take multiple rounds of federal funds to get us to that point, unless I'm missing something. I just, I think, I mean, the way it was discussed tonight, it sounded like we could be under construction in three or four years. I mean, I think we'd be very fortunate to be under construction in the next seven to 10 years.
I'm a little more optimistic than you on that matter.
Right.
But we're also talking about a phased approach. So, you know, certainly, we're not going to have the funds, I don't believe, to, to do the 75 million dollar project in, in five years. But we, we may, you know, just even with the 7 million that's been set aside already, we might have enough to do a first phase, which would be, you know, either a river crossing or a railroad crossing, particularly, you know, it's looking like they're going to be sending quite a significant amount of infrastructure money out there. There's no guarantees.
Okay. I, I just wanted to maybe set some expectations, but I mean, that's a lot of money. And I just remember working on South Hamilton Crossing, and just to assemble the 34, 35 million dollars, I think the total project cost ended up being with the real estate acquisition. I mean, that was, that was a heavy lift, and obviously, that had been on the books for 100 years. So I think we can get this built in the next 10 years. I just want to make sure that, that we are, when people leave the meeting, they understand that, I mean, the earliest we'll probably start construction is about five years from now.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. I was, what I was kind of meaning to refer to was be through design at that period of time, but then we still, we do have to go through right-of-way acquisition, and we've got to come up with those funds.
Okay, nice. Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, please. Thank you guys so much. This is informative. The website's great. We get a lot of compliments, so, so thank you. Do we have anything like Plan B? Because we're here in 10 years, we got a lot of money. The east-west connectivity plans, Rich, that you presented last week, I, I thought were great options. I mean, are, is this something we are going to be realistically looking into in addition to the North Hamilton Crossing? Because our residents need some alleviation from this traffic. And, you know, the NOOK is going to be here within 10 years. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can get a Plan B in addition to the North Hamilton Crossing. I'm just not sure of the reality of, of that scenario, but I, I just hope we're looking ahead a little bit more on top of the North Hamilton Crossing with some of the additional overpass intersection improvements that were presented last Wednesday night.
We'll take that into consideration. That's a good comment to make.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Is this project on OKI's radar?
Yeah, the, the first two phases of it, the river crossing, the railroad crossing, are an OKI's 2050 plan. But that's a, a fiscally constrained list, so it's meant to be, you know, projects that realistically could find funding. Again, you know, it's 2050. Hopefully, we're, we're talking 20, late twenties, 20, 20-something.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Last week, we were all advised of the federal infrastructure plan. And I thought, you know, it's good to be aligned, as you'd said, good to be applying, good to be considered. We found, Carla, as you had shared, North Hamilton Crossing being shovel-ready was moved up the, the, the list, if you will. We realized that the I-71, I-75 corridor bridge has, has been in wait for a long time to cross the Ohio River. We've been in wait for North Hamilton Crossing. It's been a plan for a very long time, so I hope that we would also then perhaps, through the skills of, of application and funding and things, as Joshua shared, the seven-to-10-year plan might be, might be ratcheted up. We all, as Michael shared, we know the NOOK is coming next year. We know the plans for the, the opportunity of bringing people to Hamilton, as Michael shared, east-west, in and out, egress, ingress, egress. I know you're looking at, so we appreciated the presentation last week, but importantly, that we're in line for these things, that someone doesn't come up and say missed by a week in, in application process. So again, as we all, all said, thank you for upfront. I've had two calls about the webpage being put in, in, in place. One was from a Hamilton resident, one was from a Fairfield Township resident, that I know that probably be periphery affected by the, the plan that we see up there. So he kind of wondered what's going on, because he wasn't aware of, of the potential for that sighting and things. So I said statement for further announcement. Thanks, guys. Is it fair to say that an award of track funding is a good indicator of factors of need, confidence, whether we've been stewards with other state dollars and the like?
Yes, and I'd say the, the same for, I mentioned the congressional spending, that million dollars. We are on the list of Senator Sherrod Brown's recommendate, recommended projects. And my understanding is that when the infrastructure eventually goes, that that, that million dollars essentially is tacked on to that project, and it's allocated as part of that infrastructure bill to this for the design portion.
So our state professionals, such as yourself and Rich, are, are earning these awards based upon the need for the project and the way that we're looking at things?
Yeah, I think we've got a very solid team. We're optimistic about it, us and the Butler County TID.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one last question?
Yes.
So are there dollars for in the interim? So let's say, we'll go in the middle between where, Alan, you are and where Joshua is, to do some reconfiguring of our streets, of the options that last week were presented to us. So do we have money to make some of those changes before we get to a 10- or 20-year bridge?
There, there's definitely a possibility of that. So what we'd like to do, once we get through that environmental clearance, then any component along there that, let's say, Hamilton chooses to, to go along, we don't have any grant funding, we can do that component, and it counts towards our, our local match. So if we ask for, say, 20 million dollars, and we're saying we're, we're matching it with 20 million dollars, if we've already done a $5 million improvement, that can be considered part of that larger project. And that's part of why we extended the project all the way from Hampshire to North B Street is so that anything along that stretch that, that could fit into that, we can get credit for, you know, for local match.
That would be excellent if we could do that, you know, still use the Black Street Bridge, but know that perhaps it'll channel a different way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I actually have another question, and maybe directed to Joshua. I see that 7 million dollars is what you're recommending that we put in this. How is that 7 million come up with for, it's just going to be put in a savings account, more or less, set aside for South, or North Hamilton Crossing?
Yes, if you recall the presentation from the last council meeting, it's going to be used to cover debt service for 60 months. And at the end of 60 months, it would be placed, what we're asking Council to approve on September 8th, is take that money and place it at the end of 60 months into a construction-only account for North Hamilton Crossing. So that would mean that if it's part, as Alan was just describing, if there's a component that can be built that would alleviate traffic more quickly, as an example, if there was a way to build an overpass over the train tracks on the, along the route where the North Hamilton Crossing would be built, that could be installed earlier, as long as we could build the connecting road to wherever it would lead to, which would, Councilperson Vaughn's comment, help traffic in the interim while we were trying to build the bridge across the river.
I just wanted to kind of get it on the air for any new viewers that might be listening tonight.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Somewhere, there's, there'll be no actual voting tonight. We're looking at September the 8th as the date.
Well, that's up to Council. I wasn't sure, once you got through this evening's presentations, if you needed additional time to study, if you wanted to do other things, if you decided that September 8th was when you wanted to vote. That's based up, that's based on Council's recommendation at the end of the meeting tonight.
Kind of seeing if there would be any kind of a public timeframe for folks to get back with us, those who watch TV Hamilton, other media and the like.
I don't think that there's any urgency in, in doing a final vote. I think what you just said was a very good point. I mean, you could decide to do it September 22nd or the first meeting in, in October to provide, you know, a two or three window for public input.
Mr. Mayor, I, I actually like the idea of doing it in October to encourage people to come to the next two meetings in September with their questions so that we can give them more answers. And it gives us time to kind of sort through what we're trying to do.
So that's the ground rules. There, no voting tonight, but we'll set date, and it could be either September or October. And that timeframe is still good with administration to get done. We need to get done, and also make sure the federal folks are happy with what we're doing.
I think the only two things that we're going to ask Council to vote on, obviously, on September 8th, we're going to vote on the first $7 million. That'll be on next week's agenda. So that would take the ARPA pot of money, if you will, down to 26.6 million. And I do know that because of the Corwin Avenue project in particular, since we accelerated that project dramatically in terms of timeline, that infrastructure still wants 2.2 million dollars for the stormwater piece, which would take that number then down to about 24.4 million dollars left of the ARPA funds. But we will probably have both of those, for sure, the $7 million will be on the next council agenda, and then likely the 2.2 million.
Thank you. There's no other questions. We'll move to the 345 High Street upgrade.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Ken Snyder. I'm the purchasing agent with the City of Hamilton. As, as you can see on the screen, these are estimates that we recommend for repairs for One Renaissance Center, totaling about $1 million.
Mayor and Council, if I can, I can add maybe some color to this. The recall conceal, we're also asking the building to be cleaned before we seal it. If you look at the building from the, it does not look very clean. We're working on getting a more formal estimate on that. The cooling tower replacement, as I think we discussed at the last council meeting, the, our AC HVAC components, if you will, are 20-plus years old. And now that we have three floors of additional tenants in our building, we had some issues over the summer where the temperature in the building was between 85 and 87 degrees on many days. So we'd like to get that corrected for our tenants. The, the customer first for 50,000, there is a, a need to reconfigure the lobby, especially since now that post-COVID, that we have some restriction to the elevators. Some of that is also due to security requested by ODW Logistics and 80 Acres, that we want to build what's called a customer-first desk right by the elevator doors. Just this afternoon, Dave Jones and I were walking back in, and there was an issue with a couple customers that went to the county to get a birth and death certificate, couldn't get it. And then we're coming to our side, they couldn't get on the elevators since the elevators were locked, and they were getting frustrated. We tried to show them where the telephone number was, but if you have a live human being capturing that traffic when they come in, it'll make a world of difference. So Brandon Sarver has been tasked to run points on a committee that Nathan Perry, myself, and Dave Jones are also sitting on. Tommy Long from Lemon Grenade Creative has been working with us on some internal wayfinding inside the building, but I think $50,000 would be enough to handle what we need to do in the lobby area.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
You know, Joshua, we've talked about this customer first for years, and I just think that if there's anything we can do in this building, this is one of the most beneficial, that's going to affect every citizen. So is there a way to pull that out?
Well, that's, that's exactly.
To put that, like, on the September 8th, if everyone agrees? I mean, how do we go about if, if something seems more urgent?
So I, I will say on the customer first, we, we have budgeted funds that we've already tapped into, not ARPA funds, just, we, so we've already started that process.
Okay. Okay.
Jerry Sarber has been doing work on the fifth floor for ODW Logistics. We met with him last Friday and talked to him because he built a reception desk on the fifth floor that was very similar to what our expectation was on the first floor. And since he's in the building with his contractors already, he thought he could have that under construction in 60 days. So, I think that we can move with budgeted funds that we already have. And then if council decides this is worthy, then we can replace those budgeted funds with ARPA funds later. But I feel like we're on a good timeline even without the ARPA money currently.
I'm sorry, you can do.
Well, so just for future reference, if we do see something on here we all agree with that we think maybe needs to be addressed more quickly, like the North Hamilton Crossing and the Stormwater.
Well, maybe it could be as soon as September the 8th versus tonight.
Right.
Now, I want to know about customer service is, those who called this building trying to get hold of somebody, is that all part of the customer service improvement upgrades? Is those who call in, whether they talk to a human right away or there's a short duration of time, is that all part of the customer service program?
So, we had a preliminary conversation with what you would know as utility customer service in this room just last week. And we met with all the different individuals that work in the utility customer service area. And we were trying to understand from them what type of foot traffic they were seeing, what capacity they had to service additional customers. About half the people that work there do work in the telephone area. So, you have incoming phone calls with questions on your utility bills. And then the other half would work in the front and they're the ones that are taking utility payments, parking ticket payments. But they're also telling us that the number one reason people are walking in there currently is to get a birth or death certificate, which they currently do not handle in there. They get a lot of FedEx deliveries for ODW Logistics, 80 Acres, a lot of frustration there because they don't know how to get upstairs or who to call or where to place a package. So, it's just a wide variety of reasons that people are coming in. To say that four or five people that can take all the incoming phone calls, I don't think that would be a fair statement. We did ask them about centralizing some of those phone calls. I think as council's aware, since I've started, I think we're down 120 full-time employees, which is why you get more auto attendant phone calls. It was a way to save money in the general fund. I know it's not popular, but there was, the only way to really get to a general fund saving was by, as people retired, just simply to not replace them. But we will, that will not happen by October, no. I mean, we will work towards that. I think that there's some technology that might make it a little bit easier going into the future, but we will not have centralized phone calling by October.
Maybe a report between, whether it's September the 8th or September the 22nd, just give us updated on how that planning is going and when might be the appropriate time to release funds or something for that.
Okay.
Anything else for council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Joshua on this too, a customer-first desk. Are we going to have, are we going to have to have two people manning this or just one person? Or are you trying to still talk about kiosks, just only kiosks?
So, the vision right now is to have a three-person desk. The assumption is most days it would be staffed by two people. These would not be new employees. These would be reallocated employees within the building that would sit there. I've been working with Brandon on an org chart on how the reporting structure would work with that. In heavy volume times, like for example, you get into January to April when people are coming in for income tax-type purposes. We will have someone sitting in the utility customer service area, but we might have another person sitting out there just to help because it does get incredibly busy during those four months. So, it would be a three-person desk with printing capability. The hope is that we can print birth and death certificates right there. So, instead of people having to schedule appointment, try to get upstairs, we can handle that request. So, Tom Vanderhorst has been working on the logistics of that the last couple of months. But it would be a three-person desk. And the, right now, the plan is not to add any new FTEs. It would just be a reallocation of current FTEs.
So, two people there all the time pretty much and three people when it's a busy time or somebody has a fill-in when one person is sick?
Yes.
Pretty much is.
So, I mean, there might be a time, like over a lunch break, there might only be one person there. I think that the goal is 80% of the time to have two people there. I would say 25% of the time have three people there. But there's going to be probably an hour in some days where there's only one person there covering like a lunch break.
Thank you.
Anything else from council regarding 345 High Street upgrades?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Rivers Edge upgrades?
Yes, they'll be presented by our Director of Resident Services, Adam Helms.
There are a lot of slides here. I will make this as brief as I can. I figured I'd put all the information out there so you could review it after the fact. We are celebrating 10 years of the Rivers Edge Concert Series. That means Rivers Edge is 10 years old. There are starting to be some things that need to be fixed. There are some things that weren't done properly in the first, maybe not done properly, but when we built Rivers Edge, I'm not sure that the expectation was that we'd be holding like world-class rock concerts. It doesn't seem like that was the way the stage was designed. We've kind of reverse engineered everything over the past 10 years to get where we're at today. These are the high points of Rivers Edge. You've heard us talk about before, 15 concerts a year, approximately 25,000 attendees every year, estimated annual economic impact of more than $1 million, instrumental, pun intended, with the downtown revitalization. If you remember the early years of Rivers Edge, there was a hotel and there was Rivers Edge. And then there was nothing. There was a field. And since then, we've seen massive changes in the area with the apartments. The Markham Mix East Developments, Markham Park, you know, North Second Tap and Bottle Shop, just the houses around there have been revitalized. We've been named a great place in America by the American Planning Association. The Rivers Edge Concert Series generates in excess of $50,000 annually in private investment for programming. The City of Hamilton does not pay a dime for bands or beer at Rivers Edge. That has been covered by private donations and any revenues generated from the concert series. And since 2015, which was the start of David Shaw's Big River Get Down, we've donated $30,000 to Hamilton's Fourth of July fireworks. Here are some good things people have said about Rivers Edge. 4.7 rating on Google, 4.8 rating on Facebook. And there's a quote there from an article that I liked about Hamilton blowing Cincinnati out of the water in terms of live music happening at their venues this summer. So, one of the things that I've been talking to Joshua about that concerns me is, not all that it concerns me, it just makes things more difficult, is the increased market competition. And what that does is that brings up your talent costs. When we first started this, I think it was pretty much Rivers Edge, The Phrase, Riverbend, and maybe a handful of others. But when we first started, we weren't even in the same ballpark or conversation with any of those venues. Since that time, we've become quite competitive in that space. You know, I don't think that we're ever going to get the Foo Fighters like the Andrew Brady Icon Center had for their first concert. But there are some names that would interchange with us in any of these places. So, there's just a list of the venues in the Cincinnati area. And then, you know, outside of the venues themselves, you have regional summer festivals, which have things called radius clauses that basically if a band is playing in Lexington, Kentucky at the Rail Bird Festival, that means that they can't play in Cincinnati for the rest of the summer. So, if you want that band to come to your city, you have to get real competitive with the pricing. The reason I talk about pricing is we're getting to a point where we could start to compete for some of these bands. But the thing that holds us back is we don't know whether or not the show is actually going to happen because of our roof. It doesn't keep the water out or the weather off of the performers. And if that happens, we have to cancel the show. I'm not sure if anybody remembers the Big River Get Down several, a few years ago when we had to move it to Kentucky. We didn't move it to Kentucky because we really wanted the show to happen that bad. I mean, we did. It's David Shaw and we want him to have a great show in his hometown. But if we hadn't moved that show to Kentucky, we would have had to refund all of those tickets, still pay the bands, and that would have been the end of Rivers Edge because we don't have a roof. Now, things are, we're in a little bit better financial shape now, but at that time, that was, that was pretty dicey. So, I have a list of eight things here. This is more of a wish list. Again, I put them all out there just so council could see some of the things that need to be addressed at Rivers Edge. I'll try to run through these as quickly as I can. But there is a list. The first one is the roof with sufficient stage coverage. This is hard to see, but this is a overhead of Rivers Edge with some different colored lines showing where we would like some things. As I mentioned, we can start to compete for some of these artists, but I'm not willing to put the talent expense out there or spend the money on a band if we don't know the show is not going to happen. That show gets canceled, that's detrimental to Rivers Edge. We still have to pay the bands and refund everybody their tickets if we do a paid admission show. The bands get paid as soon as they show up, basically. So, the picture on the far left is fresh from this past Friday. It rained and if you look, hard to see in that picture, there's not a dry spot on that stage, not a single dry spot. The driest spot under that roof is actually in the landscaping behind the stage where the rocks and the bushes are. So, when it rains, we have to go under the parking garage. And we did that this year, as you can see in that top picture. And when we go under the parking garage, we can't do all the cool stuff that we normally do at Rivers Edge with the video screen and the lights. And it's just not the same thing. I went to school for public administration and political science. They did not teach me how to do Photoshop in school, but this is my best attempt at photo shopping what a roof would basically need to look like to give us the coverage that we need to keep everything dry. It's a large roof, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be that big. There are several different ways you could design it or coverings. That's just a general idea of the area we would, we would need covered to produce a legitimate concert. Reconstruct the existing stage footprint. There's a red arrow pointing to a little gap in the stage that's about five feet wide. That is currently the only way on and off that stage. So, when you have bands coming in with organs and pianos and guitar amps and bass amps and drum kits, all of it has to fit through that little five-foot gap. And that becomes increasingly difficult when you start putting, you know, three, four, five bands on a stage. It really makes any production, not just bands, could be theater, could be Shakespeare in the Park, that makes it difficult to do performances on our stage. Electric capacity. Tom Vanderhorst, myself and some of our Rivers Edge staff went up to The Phrase Pavilion a couple of weeks ago just to take a look around, get a behind-the-scenes tour, ask them how they operate. And it was quick, it was pretty eye-opening. So, The Phrase Pavilion currently has six times the power that Rivers Edge has. I'm talking electric capacity. Rivers Edge, as we operate on a weekly basis, has maxed out our power capacity. Two weeks ago, when infamous string dusters were there, we had to rent a generator for $500 because we couldn't power like 10 extra lights. We're having to rent a generator again this weekend because we couldn't power 10 extra lights. So, we need, we need power at Rivers Edge. Where the power is placed in the venue. So, you can see that there's a blue dot off to the left-hand side of that picture. For some reason, that's where the power is run at our venue. So, if you're a sound guy and you're mixing a concert, you want to be right in the center of the venue, right in the middle, right in the middle of the stage. That red line shows where the, where the power and the electricity should be run so you can, you know, power up the mixing boards and the light boards. The blue represents what we currently have. So, we would need to relocate that underground conduit. Or you could build something like a trench or a trough system. That's shown in the smaller picture. What we're currently doing, again, because the conduit is too small to pull anything new through and because it's not in the right spot, you can see that cable ramp right there. That is roughly 160 feet of cable ramp. That's got to be set down and picked up every show. I did it on Sunday. It wasn't fun. A trough system would be, would be nice or a new conduit system so we could pull the Reconfigure and expand the concrete bike path next to the stage. A few years back, we decided to build a bike ramp and put it at the bottom of the stage. It has since caused some confusion and headaches on days when we do concerts with cyclists. We've kind of figured out a way to keep it open so that cyclists can use a bike path while concerts are going on, but involves going through the grass and weaving around some, some road cases. So, what we'd like to see is that strip of grass paved. There's a couple of lights there that need to be removed. So, essentially, you create a bike trail bypass lane so that cyclists can still use the bike path while we're doing concerts. Currently, we shut it down at 6:30 and it's just kind of closed on concert days. Permanent decorative fence, we have, we have a temporary fence. I'm sure you've all seen it set up when we do paid admission concerts. It works just fine. Last year, we had to leave it up all summer. It doesn't look great. It kind of makes, made Rivers Edge look like a sort of a prison. Again, perfectly functional and we don't have to do all paid admission concerts. But if we had a fence, and it could be a nice-looking fence around the perimeter of that venue, it would make doing paid admission concerts easier. And it doesn't have to be Rivers Edge that's doing the concerts all the time. We get calls all the time from different agents asking about, hey, my artist wants to come and play here. Toby Keith has asked to play in Hamilton, Ohio. Just last, just this year, we, I got asked to play by, I forget, it's 21 Pilots or Walk the Moon, one of the two, and then Mo, M-O-E. These are all bands that want to come and play here. They know about us in Hamilton. We can't accommodate those bands because we don't have electricity, a roof, or a fence where we can just agree to set up, to do a show on, on short notice. Again, a fence doesn't mean we're going fully paid admission. It just gives us that option. We can still do free shows. The PA system is also 10 years old. I believe that was a gift from the Hamilton Community Foundation. It started out as, I think, six, a total of six or eight speakers, I think six, and four subwoofers. Since that was gifted to us, Rivers Edge has added on to that. We now have a total of 14 speakers and six subwoofers. We've added some, some monitors. We've bought microphones, cables, a whole bunch of other stuff. But it's 10 years old. When the revivalists come to town or any other larger band, that PA is not sufficient. It costs Rivers Edge Concert Series $10,000 to rent a PA to do a show for the revivalists or some other bigger-name bands. PAs are not cheap. I've learned that production is, can be a black hole of money. But just to replace the speakers and the subwoofers and some other stuff, you're looking at $500,000. To replace everything, the consoles, the mixing boards, the wires, the microphones, speakers, the subwoofers, you're looking at roughly $1 million. Last thing is a mobile stage. You can see the show wagon there in that top picture. It's in peace to the show wagon. It was nearly 40 years old. It was finally, I don't know, it put out of its misery, but it was damaged beyond repair by vandals. It no longer functions. Therefore, the City of Hamilton does not have a backup stage for anything outside of Rivers Edge. When we had to go under the parking garage earlier this summer, I borrowed some stage from the Fitton Center, Ian McKenzie Thirley. That's usually not going to work for a lot of the bands that come through here. It just happened to work that day. But we don't have an alternate stage for Rivers Edge or any type of other events in the city. A mobile stage, something like that, you know, I've seen used ones for $100,000. I kind of picked $250,000 a little bit out of thin air because they don't have any readily available quotes on mobile stages. But if we were to invest in something like a roof at Rivers Edge, that would probably take a little bit more time and run into the concert season. So, we would either have to, A, cancel the concert season at Rivers Edge or come up with a mobile solution or a different solution. Another great thing about having a mobile stage like that would be you could set it up on Dayton Street in between the Markham Apartments and Markham Park and you could start to do multi-stage music festivals between Rivers Edge and, and that stage. And I remember when Jim Cohen first started talking about building the Markham Apartments, he told me, "Adam, I want a world-class music festival here and I am working on it." That is Nickel Plate District Amphitheater in Fishers, Indiana. I don't know that that roof covers what we need, but just to give you some idea, that building cost $850,000. That, that is, I tried to get through that as quickly as we, quickly as I could. There's a lot in there, a lot to unpack. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Please.
Adam, I have a couple of questions. Number one, are you really suggesting we just have to tear down the current configuration and start over?
I think we need to put a roof over the top of it. The canopy itself has tears in it. I think the estimated useful life of that thing was 10 to 15 years, so we're running up against it. But yeah, the stage needs to be kind of expanded. Those support poles don't give you a lot of room to operate. When you start putting a band or two or three on that stage, it gets real small real quick.
And if you start just nickel and diming here and there, pretty soon, you're really working around the entire facility.
That's what we're doing now. We've nickled and dimed and found patchwork solutions to make this work. And in all actuality, it's a very good venue. We've received nothing but positive feedback. I mean, infamous string dusters were just here two weeks ago. They play all over the world, and they said, this is a great spot. We get that a lot. People really enjoy our venue. So we've done great with what we have.
So my second question, if you put the decorative fence up and you don't have a concert, is that part of the River's Edge area off limits because the fence is there and I could no longer go onto that space?
I would leave that up to the Parks Conservancy. I think you can build a fence that looks nice, you know, with some brick totems, and those gates can swing. And so not only does it allow us to do paid concerts, but vandalism can sometimes be an issue at River's Edge. That gives the Parks Conservancy an option to lock up the parks after hours and hopefully deter some of that vandalism or cut down on some of the damage to the park.
You actually answered one of the questions I was asking, if it would help with the vandalism, I think.
I think so. I don't see how it could hurt unless they start spray painting, you know, the fence, but it's something Steve Timmer and I have talked about for a while.
Other questions?
Yeah, how tall would the fence be, and I'm kind of curious, what would it look like?
I haven't quoted or bid any of this stuff out. I mean, when you start designing roofs for concert venues, you start getting into load bearings, the PAs, the acoustics. You really got to dial this stuff in. I haven't looked at the fence. I know the fence that we have now is a six-foot temporary fence, so I would imagine six to eight feet, something like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
But just like anything, Adam, if we don't address it now, it's going to be worse every year.
Yeah, yeah. We're starting to see, I mean, the roof is one thing, but the concrete is starting to crack. It's not beyond disrepair or anything, but it's starting to show some signs of age in certain spots. And, you know, for me, I know Markham Park is a crown jewel, but, you know, once a week for 15 weeks in the summer, I mean, that's where everybody in Hamilton gets together.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Adam, if you had endless fund of money, what would you say would take to just do everything in this park that needs to be done if we just went first class on it, fulfill your dream list?
Again, I don't know what the price tag on any of this is. The best thing I could come up with just by calling around was at $825,000 in Fishers, Indiana. What I do know is that if we put a roof on this thing and we get the infrastructure in place, then there's opportunity, again, to generate revenue. It'd probably end up being for the Parks Conservancy. And the way we have this thing set up is a little bit different, but, you know, people start coming in and renting the venue, you can start generating revenue. I don't know that the concert series is ever, the River's Edge Concert Series, is ever going to be in a position where we can say, hey, yep, we're just going to swing the entire cost for a new roof. I don't think that day's ever going to come. Maybe some people think the concerts rake in a lot of money. They're not a huge moneymaker. They make enough to pay for the bands and buy some lights here and there, but will never make enough to put a new roof on that building or replace an entire PA system.
But we couldn't make money in the future because we have a lot of people coming to the city, so.
I think the value lies in, you know, not directly the revenue that comes into the city of Hamilton or the concert series, but the surrounding businesses. You've seen it by people wanting to co-locate back to River's Edge. That's where the value is.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, please.
What is the season? What do you consider the season? The first concert, would it be, I don't know, what, April to October?
So, we normally start the last weekend in May. You know, David Shaw this year did a show on May 21st. I think that's the earliest we've started. We typically wrap up the weekend after Labor Day. This year, we're going to September 18th. There are private rentals that are doing shows in October, October 2nd. So, I mean, I think May to October. For the River's Edge Concert Series, though, it's usually going to be mid to end of May to mid-September, 15 to 17 concerts per year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Adam, as you said, 10 years in great success in the notoriety of being acclaimed as a great venue by people that travel all over the world and share their pleasure with performing here and things. So, we don't take it lightly, and under the advice of what we're looking at, when you shared with us this evening, just the sound system alone could be in the million-dollar range. It's staggering. I know it's out there. And then, you know, the Fishers venue and things like that that are somewhat nearby, two hours away, and things like that, of what we could maybe mimic in having 2,500, 3,000 people in a venue at a time. So, and again, the overflow out into Markham Park is a success, has graduated. So, thanks for all the work. Thanks to the Conservancy, the partnership, and the collaboration and things like that. This presentation was spot-on for what we needed to be able to consider, so thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, Adam.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I do have a general statement on this infrastructure.
Sure.
I don't see any streets on the list. I just see it as a title. I'm not sure how the rest of council feels about it, but the residents are currently paying on a street levy right now that generates about $3 million a year. And I feel as a council that we have a due diligence to find every available resource, financial resource, to state current with the street resurfacing. The residents voted to send, they're paying for it, and I feel with some of the money that is coming in through ARPA, we have an opportunity to, you know, take some of that pain away, if not match it. So, just one item, maybe we could just have consideration at a later meeting or whenever, but I just, I think it's a good idea that we at least discuss some additional money for our roads, since the residents are paying on the street levy.
So, Mr. Mayor, is this meeting about discussing things, or are we maybe making notes to talk about it in September?
I would say that you've raised an issue. Are you asking for some kind of a report from administration as to how much or over what timeline could we put money into the streets over what we do now?
If it's possible. I mean, do we have streets right now that need some water main replacement that we can? I'm getting a yes and a nod.
Yeah, absolutely. We have the streets repaving program ongoing right now, but as that continues to accelerate, we are faced with streets that have infrastructure under the streets that would benefit from having, you know, main replacement to keep up with the street replacement.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I think we just maybe need a point of clarity on that. I think what Edwin is saying is, we don't need the money for street repairs. We need money for infrastructure repairs so we can do more streets. I think that's what I heard Edwin say. I just want to make sure that was clear. So this is not a discussion about which streets should be getting repaved. This is more of, what infrastructure can we accelerate so more streets can get paved?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Joshua, earlier you talked about the Corwin Avenue project.
Yes.
What that means for storm and combination sanitary sewer and things. Is that strictly, that allocation, was that strictly for the Corwin Avenue project, or was there other money that was being considered, as Edwin said, for infrastructure, underground things?
So, the request to council was for $2.2 million for storm sewer. A large part of that would cover the Corwin Avenue project, but we have pretty significant pressure on the stormwater fund right now. If you think about the amount of stormwater that was installed at South Hamilton Crossing and then followed up by the Spooky Nook project, which helped alleviate some flooding in the adjacent neighborhoods around Spooky Nook, those were two very large projects. There have been an ask from infrastructure the last couple of years to increase the stormwater cost to the residents, and we have not done that. I don't really want to do that, which is why I thought we could use some ARPA funds to do that versus raise the rate. But the problem with doing more streets is it creates a lot more pressure than on the underground utilities to come up with the money than to get that done, because there's no point paving a street if there's an 80- or 100-year-old water main, or storm sewer that needs replaced, or sanitary sewer that needs replaced. So it's more complex than just saying that. I mean, there could be some streets that we could resurface, maybe like, if you remember the presentation we had from Pat Yingling, we could do more temporary fixes like that to give a better surface where we would not have to replace. That would probably be the better use of those additional funds to get some of our streets looking better, a shorter-term fix, if you will.
Thank you.
Okay. Definitely, there's a correlation, very strong one, between the water main replacement and then the street. I mean, it might be interesting to know what your wish list would be, Edwin, as far as water main replacement, just so that maybe there could be a venue of sorts, but that's just kind of what I'm thinking of.
Right.
I mean, so we're not going to vote on it tonight, but I think it's something which maybe we need to take a look at and get a report, and we could do that.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just so I understand, street repair isn't such a single item as there's a lot that goes on. There's a lot of layers. You can't just say, let's just fix the streets. There's a lot that gets done underneath before you can go and fix streets. Is that right? And right now, you kind of have a schedule of how things are being done, so then would that schedule have to be reassessed and...
I can defer to Rich. I know he's come up with a plan, but essentially, we're trying to prioritize the streets that do not have the repairs necessary underneath, so those, so based upon condition and input and the condition of the street itself and the condition of the underground utilities, that's how we're trying to prioritize the funding currently.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments about streets at this meeting, which could be continued to another meeting? Okay. Public safety?
Yes, I have, excuse me, I have our Director of Public Safety, Scott Scormesi, present here for these items.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Scott Scormesi, I'm the Executive Director of Public Safety. I'm here to request utilizing a significant portion of the ARPA funding for two public safety capital projects that we're in dire need of, a new criminal justice facility, which would bring the police headquarters together again with Hamilton Municipal Court, and a new fire station replacing Fire Station Number 26. Station 26 is probably the quickest. The fire station's currently located at the corner of Benning Hoffman and Laurel Avenue. The station is over 110 years old. It was built for horse-drawn fire pumpers. The station was not designed for the size and weight of the current fire apparatus that we have. Station 26 houses an engine company and a cross-staff medic unit there. A few years ago, we had a structural engineer that came out, and he told us, if you need to park your trucks out on the curb. He said, if you continue parking the trucks inside the building, it's probably going to collapse. So, we had to shore up the basement, so the bay floor where the trucks park, there's a basement underneath that. So, we had to do a lot of, you can't even walk down there, it's just all shored up with wood. There's several issues with the station. I think it's fair to say that we've gotten our money's worth out of it, and it's in immediate need of replacement. I feel confident that we can build a station for our current and future needs. We've had some preliminary discussions and costing those items out between a six-bay and an eight-bay facility. So when I say that, and I say a six-bay, that's, you would be looking at three doors, but there would be doors in the front and in the back. An eight-bay would be four doors in the front, four doors in the back. I think we could do a six-bay for right around $4 million and probably get an eight-bay for about $4.5 million. I've got Chief Mercer here, if you have any questions, or if he's got anything to add
Mayor, council. So, in the past, we've always been very frugal with our stations. When I ask for something, it's not based on a want, it's based on a need, and generally very well supported by, you know, how that's going to affect not just the budget or not just, you know, our personnel that are in there. Looking at the closure of Station 27 some years ago, the change in where our fires and EMS calls are, relocating the station makes sense from the perspective of increasing or improving response times, not just to a small component of the population, but to everyone in East Hamilton. So, sharing that workload, making sure that we're getting the station in the right location without sacrificing that service, you know. So, there's a lot that goes into it. I'd like to say that I have all the answers. Rest assured, I don't, because I'm going to work a lot harder to make sure that we, you know, get those questions answered, so, but if there's anything that you have that I know off the top of my head, happy to share.
Any questions for Chief of Public Safety Director about the new fire station?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Would this just be right on that site you would just replace where it is right now?
So, no. That site, as it sits, when we closed Station 27 on Shuler Avenue, 2013, and then recently, council seeing that, we sold that to Wavepool. The gap that we left between there and the north-end station, Station 25 on North Erie, shows that the response times in Jefferson Neighborhood, East Hamilton, that's our biggest demand for service. That is the biggest focus on where actual fire incidents are, and those are the stations that are working the hardest. So Station 25 makes, out of five stations, it's probably making close to a third of the calls for the city. And if you look at plotting just the actual structure fires, where the actual real work is for a fire department, those are certainly not inland wall. They're more central to the city. Moving that station a little bit to the east side, or to the, yeah, to the east side of those tracks makes sense to improve that response time. We see a lot of complaints about, you know, trains blocking tracks, and council has heard that time and time again, and just making sure that we preserve that access to Lindon Wall and to East Hamilton without sacrificing that response time is critically important.
Thank you.
So, just so we don't get a lot of people upset right now, there's been no decision made. Everything that he said is based on the data, but I think we also need to balance. The Lindon Wall community is losing their fire station. I think that we have a couple of locations that will make everybody happy, that it will work out for our data on our response time, and it'll also alleviate some of the concerns of the citizens in Lindon Wall that feel like they're losing their fire station. So, I think we can make that happen.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
When could you make that happen, prior to a vote from council on whether or not these dollars would be appropriated?
I don't know that it could be that quick. We have a general location. I'll just let the cat out of the bag here. We're looking at a location near the South Hamilton Crossing, which would be immediate access to Lindon Wall. It would get away from the location that we first talked about, and we were talking about down at the city shop, so that if there was a train on the tracks, we wouldn't have to drive an extra two minutes or so to get up to the overpass, that we'd be literally right near the overpass, so we can go, if we need to go to the Old Seven's Territory, that's a quick run, and we can come right down to Lindon Wall from across the South Hamilton Crossing. So, that's kind of where we're focusing right now.
So you've clearly taken into consideration the issues that Chief Mercer pointed out with the runs and the kinds of runs and the number of runs in the Jefferson Neighborhood and the east end, as well as the concerns about blockage from the trains on the tracks and the ability to get around.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Gentlemen, in the current station, Station 26, how many, when you talk, Scott, on the presentation, a six-bay unit, an eight-bay unit, how many bays are in Station 26 right now?
Two.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. And help me as far as the alcohol and the runs that we make for medical versus the runs that we make for fire out of that station?
So, if we look at what the percentage of EMS calls over our total calls, 85% of what we do is for EMS. And with that fire station in Lindon Wall being a cross-staff medic unit, when the other, the frontline medic units are not available, those firefighters, those firefighter paramedics get out of their fire truck and get in a medic unit to make those quick responses. It's, you know, like I say, having that old station with that heavy equipment there, it's in a great location if you live right there, but it's... it's in a great location if you live right there, but it certainly, you know, being able to augment that service to every one of our citizens on the east side is important as well.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions regarding the fire station?
Okay, so moving to the criminal justice complex, I know that you've all had the opportunity to review the most recent feasibility study and space needs study that was completed back in 2006. I believe over the last 20 years, this is the third space study that's been done. The current police headquarters is located at 331 South Front Street, and it's in, was an abandoned Kroger building. In 1977, after Kroger closed the store, the City of Hamilton Police Department moved to that location and brought with them Hamilton Municipal Court. When One Renaissance was built, Hamilton Municipal Court moved into this building, and then the Hamilton Police Department acquired the rest of the vacated court portion. The current police headquarters is 50 years old. It was designed to be a grocery store, not a police station. The building is inefficient, and it doesn't meet the needs of the department. It hasn't for a number of years. There's numerous issues that I could go through with this building, and I might at the end, but suffice it to say, the main reason is all tied to efficiency and safety. Bringing Hamilton Municipal Court back into police headquarters will reduce our operating costs on personnel transporting, the liability of transporting personnel, the security of those prisoners, and it will free up the second floor, another plate on this building that could be opened up for another tenant. In 2016, in the 2016 study, it included a space study for Hamilton Municipal Court's needs, and they suggested that we would need approximately 65,000 square feet. This puts us in the $30 million neighborhood for a new building. That, so, the fire station, we don't have land. I don't know that I mentioned, obviously, I mentioned that. We, there's some land down there that the city owns, but that price that I gave you did not include land. This price does because we already own our own land for this site. We purchased that 20 years ago when we were looking at sites across the city, and this property came available, and we knew that it'd be an excellent location for police headquarters. I don't know any other way of ever getting this done without using ARPA funding. A couple of things that I'll throw out, again, there is a laundry list. The site security of our current location, anybody can take a look at it. I don't need to tell you what the security issues are there. We're underneath a, you can just about get on the top of the building from the railroad overpass. The prisoner loading and unloading is a security feature. A new building, we would pull into a bay, close the door, get the prisoners out. We've in the past had issues where a prisoner's gotten loose, and we've ended up in a hostage situation. It's the loading ramp in the back, bringing in intoxicated people. It's just not designed. It was a truck loading dock for the grocery trucks. The emergency generator in the building doesn't, it doesn't power the building. So, we've had critical incidents that we've had happen with a power outage, and the detectives are in there sitting in the dark because it wasn't designed for that. And that generator is 50 years old. There's just a number of issues. Our locker room, the lockers are the size, they're actually much smaller than an elementary school locker room. We have a number of females on the department. Their locker room's in the women's restroom. The shower facilities, there are none. I mean, it's just got major issues. We really need a new police headquarters.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I view this, I try to say this as delicately as I can. It is a safety issue, but I also think it's an economic development issue because when, for instance, we spent all the money trying to get Journal Square looking nice, thinking that people would come to the restaurants or bring their own lunch and sit out there and enjoy a cup of coffee, eat lunch, and those four spaces ended up being taken over by people that were coming here to appear in court, jail, whatever. They've got their paper bag with beer in it. They've got their cell phones charged up. And here we are, you know, you never have a second time to make a first impression. So, when businesses are coming to see Hamilton and it's not the most desirable image that we're presenting, so I feel like this is an economic development tool also, where we could create a better atmosphere downtown.
It is, and this is a spec office building. It wasn't really designed to be a courtroom. So, I don't think what a lot of people realize is we have a holding facility, two holding facilities here that on a normal day, what, 30 prisoners on that second floor? Not built for that. And then, there's a safety issue, and a, a lot of our employees are uncomfortable coming in through the parking garage. And if any of you have been here during the morning when there's 50 people waiting to get into court to run that gauntlet of trying to get through those folks, it's, makes some people uncomfortable.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Can I assume that the current location would just be vacated? There's no use for it if you were to have a new police service center?
I think Joshua has a couple of ideas. I mean, we own that property and it's.
Right, right. But I mean for police purposes.
No, we would not need it.
You're done with that space, and Joshua can do what he wants.
Yes.
Okay.
And Scott, importantly, with TV Hamilton and the media and things, we talked about Municipal Court and Judge Gademeier's wish to also be part of this new complex as well. So, importantly, it'd be a joint effort between the police division and Municipal Court and move over there. You had mentioned 65,000 feet. Would that also include the court space?
It does, yes.
And then, again, the full property complement of what we own on Hanover Street would also then be eligible for the police parking vehicles and all of the necessary things for the officers when they, when they drive to work. They've got it placed with their personal vehicles.
Actually, secured parking.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
I guess, well, first of all, I'm 100% for it. I mean, new police station, new fire station. That was one of my things I said we have to do. We have $14 million in ARPA funds that we are talking about on this one.
The presentation I provided to city council, I think it was maybe two meetings ago now, at least from tonight, two meetings ago, was 17.5 million. During the time that we had that first meeting, I've been working with Dave Jones on trying to understand where we would get the financing to complete, call it a $30 million Justice Center. I think that's going, in my mind, is going to dictate the actual request for public safety. If we do, if we do an eight-bay fire station versus a six-bay fire station, or relocated Station 26, which I believe we should go with a full eight bays because I think it provides us a lot of flexibility, especially with the dynamics of our community change so frequently in terms of where traffic's coming, where calls are going. I like the idea of having something that's located very close to South Hamilton Crossing because it provides great flexibility and response time. So, we had estimated $4 million for a six-bay station. I'm just guessing a little bit, maybe $4.5 million for an eight-bay station. I think that's pretty fixed. The fire station, it's going to be between $4 and $4.5 million, depending if we go six or eight bays. The question mark really is how much of the ARPA funds are we going to need for the Justice Center based on the complimentary financing that's going to have to go hand-in-hand with that? And that's what we've been doing, Dave Jones and I have been doing the last couple of weeks, is looking at different scenarios. I'll just say that from a debt service coverage perspective, we're looking at taking kilowatt-hour tax revenue and dedicating it towards debt service. We're also looking at taking the court security savings that would be realized by combining the courts and the police, which we think conservatively would be $400,000. It could be maybe a higher savings. That would, on an annual basis, would be going towards covering debt service. We're also talking about the length of that debt service. Do we borrow money for 20 years? Or since it's a benefit to the community and to future residents, do we try to stretch it out 30 years, 35 years? So, those are the type of conversations we're having. I think we're going to have some more information before you do a final vote. We can explain a path forward on what a $30 million facility would take in terms of financing. Actually, I'm hoping that maybe the ARPA fund request for this could go down a little bit if we can put together the financing package that would free up some money for streets or free up money for some of the other things we're going to talk about this evening.
So, there's possibility, if you get this, your debt, sorry about this on the course tonight, but if you get this all, you and Dave get this handled, excuse me, this headquarters could be under construction next year, possibly?
I think that some planning's going to have to go into it. Scott and I had a meeting yesterday with someone that specializes in design build. Do you do a construction manager at risk? Do you do a full bid? Do you do a design build? So, we're trying to evaluate those options. If it is a true design build, I think it's possible we could have it under construction a year from now if council authorized the funding in the next 30 days or so.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, please.
Scott, Joshua, and as you said, a lot of due diligence now. We heard earlier from the engineers about grant funding and things. Are there grants out there for this sort of, I'll call it, construction project?
I'll defer to Scott on that.
I've not seen any.
Just wondered, and again, it's talk.
I mean, we've literally been trying to do this for 20 years, and we've searched.